No. Okay. Good evening and thank you for coming. We're going to say the pledge of allegiance that we started. Pledge is where? Oh. I pledge allegiance to the United States of America. And to the people who have served in this nation under God, individual, with every right and right to. Hey. Um, let's go through adopting the agenda. Does um. Anyone want to make?
How much do we adopt the agenda?
Okay.
All second.
Thank you. It's been moved and adopted. We do this uh the agenda or accept the agenda. All in favor?
Aye.
Anyone opposed? Okay, we do have one public. Comment. I just need to read this little statement real quick. While the board welcomes public input, we ask that you model your uh the behavior that we hope to see in our students. We encourage speakers to consider their words carefully and refrain from personally directed discriminatory abusive or obscene language or complaints regarding any individual staff member or student. The board president may interrupt and or terminate the individual statement if the allotted time of three minutes has expired or if student privacy is violated. Public comment period is not a time for dialogue between the board and the public. To align with the Open Public Meeting Act, the board will not respond to statements, questions, or challenges during public comment period. There will be no back and forth dialogue. Please know that the board silence is neutral and signifies that they are listening thoughtfully. Who's making the comment?
I. Hi, my name is Kaya. I'm from Pioneer Elementary School. I'm seven years old. I'm in first grade in Mrs. Donovan's class and. I had a great year and. Um, I think. I. I have practiced this award and I am very excited that my that. That this really great school here and I love all my teachers and I've made a lot of progress in. We started this class or social emotional class and I. And I love all my teachers and big thank you to my mom, my dad, and all the other kids that helped me and grownups that have have helped me and I just. Give a big thank you to everybody who's helped me and. I just love my school and. I was just willing to tell you about this school here. Thank you. That's all.
Thank you. That was very brave of you. Thank you. We appreciate hearing your comments. Hey, does anybody have any questions about the items listed on the agenda? I have a copy.
Yeah, uh the 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 was the contracts and agreements. So some of them I just wanted clarification.
Sure.
But let's figure out which ones they are. So that first one would be. Healthcare situation? Can you explain that a little bit to me?
That is a student who requires a home health nurse.
Oh.
So as a requirement of that uh or safety needs, uh she has a nurse here with her full time.
Gotcha.
Yeah.
Okay.
We're only responsible for that during the hours and the numbers four days a year.
And so the amount that's paid is paid for it's the the that person that's with us.
Yes, yep, correct.
Uh and then the next one, the elevation quote?
Yes.
What's that?
That is our multi-level learner data uh platform. So that's where we track all the progress of our multi-level learners. Uh and there's also some teaching strategies and really good resources for our classroom teachers that are starting to use that they're starting to use this year as well.
Okay. Do we as a board not have to read that?
Uh it's on the.
It's on there.
Yeah.
Okay. Uh Lego education. That's a lot of money for Legos.
It is.
I mean, not that I'm a total Lego.
I know and we're really.
I have a bucket. We can save some money.
So these aren't just.
I have several.
You don't understand any Legos. These are Lego robotic where our kiddos code and then they program the robot. So it's part of our school. Um the the currents uh Legos that we have are, I think, from when I was at the school at Pioneer. So they're a little outdated. So this is a refreshing, exciting thing about this is being covered by a grant. And every school will have this opportunity, not just one school. So it's for all five of our elementary schools.
Love it. Cool. That's all I have.
Well, I had a few of the. Questions about our accounts payable. Um. First off, I why do we reimburse tuition for an advanced education? Is that part of the contract?
Part of the QEA contract. Yes, they have. I believe. I don't want to give an exact number, but there's a there's a set aside amount that our teachers get for tuition rate personally.
Okay, I just was curious. I thought, wow, everybody else has to pay for that.
Um and there it could be. It's up to I don't quote me on the exact number, but it's up to, I believe, twelve hundred dollars. And then they can come, they can request it once. If there's still money left in this pool, they can request a second time.
And then I had um. Was reading about the rate of rooms that we rent for some of our conferences like the PBIS. Is the conference in that same hotel?
I did not attend that one. Yes, it is. Yeah, it is.
That five hundred dollars a room to me was just unbelievable. Um and then the fire science one, that was three hundred for two rooms, but the other two were two thirty-four, which is about what you're gonna pay.
Yep.
Um, the title three LEP, we have twenty-six people calling to that.
Title three.
That's three seventy-one a room and I'm.
Title three.
Title three LEP.
Who said it? Is that available?
Oh, Wally, I know.
Wally. I'm gonna phone friend. That's okay.
Uh huh.
Colleen?
Uh, I.
Or.
You should ask the three, but I.
Victoria, yeah, that is. Yes.
It's really hard to hear back there.
Victoria, it's the title three funds. Um. Uh, somebody, yeah, L E P funds.
Which you're acquiring that supported the Washington Association of Medical Education Conference.
And there. Twenty-six go.
Sorry.
Twenty-six people are going?
They have they.
Yes.
Yeah, fourteen hundred in those students.
Yeah.
We're excited. It's an amazing opportunity for them to learn about supporting.
Yeah, okay, thank you. Um. And the Q S D programs of study, what was? I don't understand that.
Were these programs of study? Where where did you find that?
On the accounts payable.
I would have to look that up. Give him a number for that one?
No.
Okay, T and I can look that up and and get back to you on that.
Okay. But it almost says programs, so it's not really a book.
I I would have to see exactly what it is. I can I can. My will be updated to you guys.
Okay.
Yeah, um, it seems pretty broad to me, so I'd have to.
Yeah.
I know that's real because if you don't, we want information.
Okay.
It's the C T program study.
Oh, thank you. Oh, I see what you're saying. Yes.
Huge initiative this year to map out our K A twelve programs and study in C T. We actually have twenty-five programs to study where students can see what they get, um what courses they need to take in order to get industry recommended certification in our C T program. So we did a huge backwards mapping of it with a specialized grant. Um, we got, we actually got two grants this year.
So Sean, if you put the print guy quote, that's paying for that program of studying materials.
Those materials that are community based, they're gonna have at our next parent night, the after graduation and beyond night, we'll have those five little materials.
Nice.
Yeah, it's great.
Thank you. Um, I don't have any more questions. Does anybody else have any questions? Okay, do I have a motion to accept this?
No, make a motion to accept the agenda. We did the adopt the agenda.
Oh, okay.
I'll second.
A second?
Yes, she said.
Okay, so it's been moved and seconded, but this motion will be carried.
Yes.
All in favor?
Aye.
Anybody opposed? Okay. Special recognition for Monument and George Elementary Fourth Grade Field Trip.
Let's have Laura and Phil and you guys could come up and introduce news here with us today and just talk to us a little bit about your adventure.
Sure. He's the one that got the news interview, so he's.
Phil's always there.
We thought it was more responsible. Laura was driving. Um, hi, I'm Philly April Principal at Monument Elementary. This is Laura Villafondo, President, Principal at George Elementary. Uh, we were the the third uh field trip to go to Seattle. Um, and the first two went by without a hitch. We were, uh, we left Quincy right around six in the morning. Um, and made it over to our first stop, which was the Museum of Flight. And then we went north and visited the Pacific Science Center. And after visiting the Pacific Science Center, we were um gonna then go up to the estuary in Padilla Bay, which is just in between Burlington and Anacortes there. Along the way, it started to get rainy out, and so we made the decision to postpone that and just go straight to the Lucille Umberger Elementary School. And while we were en route, uh, there was a tragic incident involving Washington State Patrol on I five. And we were in the suburban that's a support vehicle. Our job is to go ahead, pick up all the food, get all the food set up. While the buses are en route, so that when the buses get there, we have a nice um buffet of food for the kids to kind of keep them uh their attention focused. And so uh Ms. Villafondo and I um were, we were a little bit ahead of the bus when we were following our GPS and we got rerouted off of I five into Everett's um residential area, which uh is is where I grew up. So I, you know, for me, it was a little bit nostalgic for a little while there. But uh the buses were a little bit behind us because they uh were trying to stay together. They took a different path based on their GPS. So we were separated by only about a mile. Um, but by the time we got into Everett, um, every single vehicle on I five going northbound had been rerouted to the same areas. Um, probably because they're all using the same GPS. I don't know. And we got stuck in a traffic jam in uh downtown Everett. And it, I think we probably got off the freeway right around five o'clock or something like that. And to get from like the four miles or whatever it was from where we were to North Everett, it took roughly about almost three hours for us in the suburban. The buses were behind us and it took them um a much longer time. They were in their bus from about four thirty until about eleven o'clock that night. And I'm sure the bus drivers could tell you that the hour bus rides that they take with these kids is plenty. And they were amazing. They were in those buses for six hours. Our teachers, Mrs. Botford, Mrs. Parish, Mrs. Basil Dua, um, Ms. Avalos. Were fantastic. Our chaperones were joined here by Kelly Kern and Brittany Albrecht and don't see everyone. Um, but they were uh doing such a phenomenal job of entertaining these kids for about six hours while they're on a bus, while they're in gridlock. And when I say gridlock, it was to the extent where you couldn't even drive down an alleyway because there were so many cars that were stopped waiting to move. Um, and so we were a little bit of a head. We got out of Everett. Um, all of the traffic on I five during rush hour Seattle traffic was getting funneled through Everett and ended up at a bridge that was under construction and had one lane. And so when we got through, we immediately went up to uh our school, Lucille Umberger, and we were in constant contact with the teachers. Um, and we thought, you know, they were just a mile behind us. We thought, okay, they'll be shortly behind us. By the time we got up to uh Umberger Elementary and we were in constant contact, they said, we have not moved three blocks. And we were just like, okay. And they're like, the kids gotta go to the bathroom, the adults gotta go to the bathroom, the drivers have to go to the bathroom. They're getting hungry. And I'm like, okay, well, where are you? And they're like. We're on Broadway in downtown Everett. I'm like, what's nearby? And they go, an auto zone. And so they were putting on vests, walking our kids through downtown Everett to go into the auto zone so they could use the bathroom. So these kids could. Realures and our chaperone, a constant walk bus situation to and from the local businesses. Um, they'd uh started snacking on everything they could find. And they made it a total of like six blocks over four hours. And we had time to go all the way to Umberger. And then we started to drive back because we thought they were gonna get out. But by then, um, Mrs. Botford and one of the parents, Sonia Raboya, had been in contact with the local police department. And the police department were like, you guys are not gonna get out. There, everything's shut down. Um, we will help you find someplace to stay here. And so that uh officer, I can't remember his name, he works either, uh, officer, Lieutenant Fontaine for the Everett Police. Department also is in charge of the Everett School District uh School Resources Officers, started calling all the principals in downtown Everett. And I got ahold of the Everett High School Principal, um, Kelly Graves, I believe, Shepherd, Kelly Shepherd. And she was, she met them at the high school, the Everett Police Department, because they couldn't get out of traffic, had to go provide a police escort, turn on their lights, their sirens, get them out of traffic, go to the high school. Um, Principal Shepherd then called one of her uh parent in uh Everett High School student who operates a hotel, said, we need to get some of these people some hotel rooms. Um, our drivers have been in the bus, you know, six hours in just the afternoon, not including the three and a half hours or almost four hours before that. Um, and that uh hotel front office desk manager was like, there's nothing. We have nothing here. And so she's like, can you help me? Can you find me hotel for these drivers? And the gal said, sure. So she called her back. They found a place in Lindwood, which is about fifteen miles south of Everett, kind of um from where they were. But as uh we got there, we realized, hold on, you know, they have buses that they need to drive. We have the suburban. If there's an emergency, we need the suburban for emergencies. And so Everett then gave them one of the Everett School District vans to take up there. The principal put the rooms on her credit card. Um, the police officers went around and got us um a bunch of cheeseburgers. And so we slept in the uh gym of Everett High School on the floor. Um, I don't think we, Laura and I got back to them about midnight or so. I don't think we went to bed until about one. The Everett High School staff showed up about five to play basketball, um, turned on all the lights. They had no clue they were sleeping. Um. Yeah, I love their commitment to fitness. Um, and so we went out and talked to them, uh, turned all the lights back off. And then we packed everything up. Um, Principal Shepherd had made arrangements with her food service to feed us all breakfast. They have a coffee stand very similar to we have Java Jacks. Um, she opened up and opened the tab for us to get coffee. So all the adults got coffee. Uh, their counseling department, they have two therapy dogs that they brought in.
Oh, nice.
And the big joke was it was more for the staff than the kids. The kids were having the time of their lives. Um, and you know, at the end of the day, we then went, uh, skipped the morning session, went straight to Witten Park Zoo. Um, you know, and the the biggest thing about through all of it was, first of all, um, it is always nice to know that other school districts are always have that commitment to the safety of the youth in not just their area, but all the areas. Um, our staff are amazing. Our parents are amazing. And they were on a bus. None of them say stuck on a bus. They were on a bus for six hours entertaining these kids. Somebody was stuck. Um, they were keeping them entertained, meeting all of their, you know, not just their their basic needs of, you know, needing food and to relieve themselves, but you know, all the S E L needs that go with, why are we not on the freeway? And by then, the reports were coming out that someone had been shot and killed, you know, um, and at one part, we don't like what happened and how we were stuck, but on the other part, there's a much better alternative than have we been closer to that situation, possibly seen something. Um, and again, our drivers were fantastic managing that crisis while they're also. Worried about all the safety of the kids on the bus. Our teachers are just phenomenal. Um, you know, that is a situation that no one would want to be in. You would never predict that, obviously. And then our parent chaperones, um, by extension of our teacher's leadership, just did a fantastic job managing the kids, all of the anxiety. And at the end of the day, people are like, well, what kind of field trip was it? I'm like, well, you know, we promised the kids we were gonna get on a bus, have a really long bus ride. We promised them we'd sleep on a basketball court. Um, they did that. We promised them that we get to go to a few places. We only missed one of them. Um, other than that, you know, that was what the fourth grade field trip uh is for them. They will, crossing my fingers, have the only police escort in the history of fourth grade field trips. You know, that's the plan anyways. Um, you know, we made a new friend and now the Everett High School staff. And a-again, I just think it was a phenomenal, um, just example of like our teachers and our our parents and our community. And I I brought up multiple times how we were in an awkward position um about seven or eight years ago when the U D A bus crashed out there in George. And they're like, well, you paid it forward then. And I was like, you know, I maybe yes, maybe no, but I also know, like, again, it just shows what great people are out there in the communities when these times come up when we need them to. So, um, it was, it was amazing. It was awesome. We have some of our uh kids, girls here that have some shirts to commemorate the situation. Our our bus drivers are wearing the adult versions of that, so. I want to thank Kelly and Brittany for throwing that together and um is, what was it? Uh, on the bus for five plus?
Stand up, everybody.
Oh, yeah, yeah. If you're wearing that shirt, can you stand up?
Everybody was part of.
Yeah, everyone. Yeah.
On the back is awesome.
Yeah.
As our agenda.
Fantastic job.
Yeah.
I love it. The the kids wanted, actually, I don't know the official um color, but we are calling the school bus yellow. Yeah, any questions or anything?
Just a huge thank you to all of you. The fourth grade field trip is a magical thing. Often many kids see the city and the ocean for the first time ever. And so it it's already a little bit, you know, sleeping on the floor of a gym is a challenge in its own right for those of us who are older than ten. Um, but just so proud of all of you for pulling it together for these kids and it it's another reason to be proud of the district. Thank you.
Absolutely. Yes. Um, and Kelly's gonna come up first. And I, again, it it was for Laura and I, uh, we were, it was a real feeling of helplessness beyond the helplessness that that was on the buses. We're in a suburban driving, you know, we made it out, um, knowing that we're sitting there while everyone's on a bus. I don't know if you've been on a bus lately, but there is not a ton of space. Um, it it was just phenomenal. So, yeah, again, hats off to our parents and our teachers and everything like that.
And I talked, I talked to Katie about ten thirty that night and it was just so impressive, you know, you have Marta and Jim and Katie from our transportation department. I mean, just absolute rose. What a stressful situation. Um, I called Katie about ten thirty and she said, how are you doing? Well, not moving, but there was no, she was not agitated. She was calm, um, you know, keeping it together for the staff and the teachers and the kids and just you guys at the home of the buses. You guys just did an awesome job. And then I had the picture, I'm gonna find it, I'm looking for it. There's such a great picture of Rachel directing traffic out in the middle of the street in a yellow vest. It's true. And then right. Right behind her, said, we're hiring. No, you can't. She's hired. She works for. So just very thankful for all the teachers that were there. And you know, reminds me the the Mr. Rogers quote, that you look for the helpers, you always find people who are helping. And man, what a really great example of that. So just thank you so much. And I would tell you a lot of work.
Sorry, really, it's just though not my thing and not that I want to do this, but I feel obligated because um, Ms. Botford and nothing against, I'm like, I think Ms. Botford was on our bus and that's, I can speak for our bus and what our experience was. And the um, the thing that she brought to our kids, um, between the um atmosphere, she was having the kids stand up and do stretches. She was having them, she held the radio, the loudspeaker over with an audio book. She was doing games. She kept it lighthearted. We did not suffer. We were not, we did not feel harmed or unsafe. Um, it was a memory of a lifetime and I would do it again. But I know that um a lot of that goes back to Ms. Botford. Um, I remember very physically or being on that bus with Katie as an amazing bus driver, being very lenient with what our kids were able to do because obviously this is unforeseen circumstances and we had to be giving of that. And um but um she, Ms. Botford was on the phone with the lieutenant, which was on the phone with Everett principal or Everett principal, which was on the phone too. And so it was a, it was a. And so it was a, it was a team effort. Um, I know that for our bu- bus and that's why I'm speaking for our bus alone, but we couldn't be more grateful for what Ms. Botford had done for us and what she provided for these kids, not knowing, um, I was also, uh, when we got to Everett High School, um, obviously, um, Phil condo and, uh, April was, were Mr. April and Phil condo. Were not able to be there, um, because they were all the way, um, back in Burlington. Um, she took control. She took and she led the kids. She gave clear expectations. I happened to be standing next to the assistant superintendent, not knowing it then. Um, and she's like, she has a job anywhere. And I'm like, oh no, he's mine. He's mine and I will, like, no way. Um, but honestly, I just, um, I think that it was all of those things. They had no clue that she wasn't the leader and she wasn't. But she took that hold and she, thank you to the bus drivers, Everett High School, Everett Principal Kelly Shepherd, um, the lieutenant, all of the things played out and how they were supposed to. And, um, I'm truly grateful and thankful to be a part of it and have these memories that our girls will never, ever forget. Um, but it wasn't a bad memory. It was a positive and well, um, it's a good experience for all. So Botford, you know that I love you and you are an amazing teacher and this is just one example of what you've given my daughter this year. So, thank you.
As a bus driver, I have to say, she was an awesome teacher for those kids. I've been driving since nineteen ninety-five. I've been doing this every year. And that was the best repainted that made my life easier. There was a time she said, come out, we'll take it in half an hour and a half. It made my life so much easier to do.
Pretty much stayed on my bus too. Uh, it was very calm. Kids were able to get walk around and nobody panicked him. Other than when it was, we gotta go. Okay, here's our phone. Um, I also like to point out, when we got to the school. The police officers were standing in the corner with you. All the kids got past, all the kids went right up to and paid.
Oh, how nice.
And I'd also like to thank the custodians that were on, kind of, the school that night. By the time we got there, they had the bleachers pulled out. They were setting tables up. Uh, everybody at Everett High School went above and beyond. And we can't thank them enough. Yeah, uh, without orders, if you got paperwork to do or to change a shift, you go do it, park them at the high school. So they were patrolling around the high school, making sure our buses were were safe. And then he went down, bought hamburgers. I, he was staggering a pot and I heard saying, now those people can smell coke. Uh, so he went down and got burgers, so he had something hot. I had some coke each. Right. On my bus, the kids, the teacher, the chaperones, they just, they were just enjoying the experience. I was maintaining.
Well, you got a one forty-eight chance.
I, I, we got stuck in a traffic, text wrong and said, hey, we're stuck. We ain't moving. My next test, test was, remember how I told you how I meet this side of the mountain? But, yeah, I said, I'd never do this trip again, but the next morning I got up, you know, because you know, we put in my time, the time we got in the morning till we got to bed. It was almost like twenty-two hour ahead. I got three thirty. It's been a long time since I put it in. But the next day I thought about, yeah, I was like, all in all, it was worth my trip. And the chances of that happening to us.
Right.
Again, it's less than one percent, almost zero, but you know, because it's such a odd courage.
It's two percent now.
So, but I would do those tests here.
Um, so a lot of you don't know my face. Um, it's probably because I'm new to Quincy. Um, I moved to Quincy about, uh, the beginning of August this past year, um, from Arkansas. Um, my husband's work brought us here and I was super excited to come here. So, um, I've traveled a lot. I've had a lot of different teaching experiences in a couple of different states. And I just want to say you have a very special community here, um, because my chaperones that I had on my bus, my parents, um, were outstanding. I literally think I got the best of the best on my bus, um, because it's, it's, they're a testament to when you work together as a team to accomplish a, a common goal. Um, how quickly you can do that and how amazing you can do that. And so, um, it just, it wouldn't have been possible, all the things that we accomplish. Um, I know that Kelly had packed a ton of snacks, um, in a backpack. Um, I think over and aboard any, like, over and above, above any snacks that you could ever eat, you know? And so I know we were just giving it out to the kid, you know, and they were sharing their snacks and, um, you know, she came up to me and she had a row of Oreos and she said, hey, do we need to give these Oreos to the kids? And I said, no, let's hold it. I'm like, that's a bag and a, you know, a trick in a bag. Like, we, I don't know how long I'm gonna be here. She actually had those Oreos that she brought to me this morning when she dropped our shirts off. Um, and she said, I feel like your kids need these Oreos now. Um, we can use them. We've made it. Um, so I just, I can't say enough for my parents, but I can't say enough for my kids. Um, you truly do have a really special community here and amazing people that work together and get stuff done and um, take care of one another. And so it's, it's just, I really want to applaud you on that. Um, I haven't seen that you know, anywhere else that I've been. And so, uh, I'm just very, very thankful that I can be a part of such an amazing community that you have here and that I'm on this team. And I'll tell you what I told, uh, Nick when he, um, said, well, I saw a photo of you and like, please don't fire me. I didn't ask permission. I just didn't. Um, I'm not sure if I could do it or not, but I did. Um, so I'm glad that we can find you for that photo and I'm glad I didn't make that.
Thank you, everyone, for coming tonight. Yes. Um, Mount View Elementary, Gelling Report.
Yes, you're gonna need to use a mic? Yeah. All right, board, well, welcome. Welcome to Mount View Elementary. My name is Manuel Ramos. I am the proud principal of Mount View Elementary. It was awesome to hear that story. By the way, guys, thank you so much for, for sharing that. Um, I'm not sure how I'm gonna top that, but hey. But I do want to echo the fact that, you know, our district is really big on just that culture of safety and belonging and, and really honoring the fact that our, you know, that respect piece and just we, we stick together as a district. So, thank you for sharing that. Um, I remember my very first, um, year at Quincy, I actually, it was in fourth grade and the fourth grade field trip was one of my most memorable moments ever. Uh, probably not as memorable as this one, but it was something I've never forgotten. This nickel, who is Miss Hykes now. Amazing teacher and it's awesome to make that connection to where I'm at today. Um, I'm in my fourth year as an administrator, two years here at Mount View. Was at George for two years prior to that. Was a teacher at the high school. I taught multilingual learners and I was an avid teacher. I was there for five years. I was at Mo- uh, Monument for four years prior to that, teaching fourth, fifth and sixth grade. So, uh, it's been a journey, paraprop prior to that. Uh, and a Quincy High School graduate as well. So, um, it's pretty amazing to, to now have my own child graduating on Saturday. Was just amazing to see that. Wow, that's just. Thank you. So, yeah, and I do have another child that, you know, who will be going, transferring up to the high school next year. And I have a kiddo at elementary. So I had a kiddo at every go to the, it's really interesting, you know, this year. But, um, but anyway, um, as you can see up there, Mount View, we are all about value and safety, respect and belonging. So again, we strive for growth every single day. And it's not just in the academic realm. It's also in the behavioral piece. So just making sure that our students are growing each and every single day. Um, we are a very trauma-informed and restorative practice, uh, staff. So we try to focus to our best to focus, to be focused on being proactive and preventative rather than being reactive and punitive. So it's all about getting to really know who we're, are. Um, another thing, you know, again, it's, it's, I always tell my staff, we gotta make sure we make connections before we start making corrections. So it's really getting to know who our students are. Uh, that's very important to us. Um, and again, we know that foundation or relationships are the foundation of everything that we do. And it's gonna, it's again to honor who we are as a, as, as a staff and as students and just celebrate our backgrounds as well. Um, and if you can see our school, we have two hundred and seventy-seven approximately students enrolled in our building. Uh, eighty-two, a little bit over eighty-two percent of our students are career reduced. Uh, lunch and do have twenty-three certificate of staff members. The majority of our students are Hispanic Latino, about ninety percent. And as you can see, we have eight point four percent white. We have point seven, eight of Hawaiian, other, and then point seven Asian. Fifty-six percent, this is very important, fifty-six percent of our students are multilingual learners. And as a multilingual learner myself, I really, you know, make sure and I take pride in making sure that our students are supported in any way, any way, uh, possible, especially when it comes to language development. So, um, again, ten percent, a little bit over, almost eleven percent of our students are migrant students. And thirteen, a little bit over thirteen percent or eleven percent of our students are students, um, who have I U Ps or an individualized education plan. Uh, moving on to our improvement goals. So again, culture of safety and belonging has been a huge, huge focus of ours over the last couple of years. Um, and we do believe that without that culture of safety belonging, we can't hit that second goal of rigor and relevant learning experience for our students. So we really take pride on making sure that we have that established, that foundation piece. So we want to make sure our students feel culturally accepted, safe, seen, heard and celebrated in order for them to continue that positive learning community. Uh, and then we outlined some strategies that we've been focusing on this year. We do have a P B I S committee that meets every month. We actually, we're meeting twice a month just to make sure that we're hitting all of our P B I S expectations for positive behavior and interventions, of course. Uh, we do have a Swiss platform where we collect all of our discipline data and we monitor that regularly and we make decisions based on that data. Um, another big piece, another strategy is that we support ongoing foundational GLAD strategies. So that's the, uh, guided learners acquisition design. So we try to, again, to focus on our, on supporting our multilingual learners. We have identified two, uh, GLAD leads in our building. So they support with training, modeling, uh, strategies for our teachers. So it's been very amazing to have that in our building as well. Um, another big piece, we collaborate together as a staff in order to make sure that our students have voice and choice. Our families have voice and choice when it comes to their learning. Um, a big piece, a big focus this year has been learning logs, having our students reflect on their learning. Um, they've been setting goals, not only, you know, in the classroom, but also if they are multilingual learners, they look at their RITA scores, they set goals and we try to, you know, again, move up on those different language domains. So it's been very good to have that set up as well. Uh, we do have some students that would prefer based on their language, for example, instead of writing a paper, they would prefer to speak and express themselves. And that's been a big way for some of our students to choose to have some choice when it comes to some of the ways. And again, we just want to make sure that they're getting the concepts down. Uh, when it comes to rigor is irrelevant learning, um, again, making sure that every student experiences rigors learning that connects to the real world and the future. So we made it a priority to ensure that our students do have that real world up to this, for example, field trips, right? We try to have field trips, we bring in guest speakers. Uh, we do have, we actually have a student from Q I A from the big picture that's coming in and zooming into ship with one of our counselors, with our counselor in the building. Uh, we have students from the high school that are in careers in ed, um, and are working with our kids as well. So it's been really nice to see them just, just work with our students. Our students are learning so much from that. Uh, and it's really just bringing us together as a whole. Um, the other piece, data days, we do quarterly data days with our staff where we meet myself, our instructional coach, uh, with every grade level. And we really dive into the data and look at quantitative qualitative data to see where our, we celebrate successes and we look at areas for growth. And we draft, um, action plans to support our students, whether it's in what we call an acceleration block and/or intervention blocks. So that's always been a big focus of ours. Um, data days, again, I will mention a little bit more about that in, in the bottom here. Um, but we do have other teams in the, in the building or committees. M T S S, uh, the Equity in Action, Inclusive Collaboration. So again, it's just working together to support those district initiatives and making sure that our students are supported by making sure that our teachers have all the professional development that they need to be successful. So those are just some of the, uh, strategies that we have there that I, I outlined. The next piece really talks about the data day. Um, and if you can see there, we have some data bought to spring on Star. So we show Star growth data. And I've divided up into different subgroups. We have students who are receiving special education. We have our multilingual students and then all students. So we have students who have made, have made high growth to typical growth to low growth and then a number of students. So as you can see, for our students, it's special education. We recognize we have a lot of work to do. So again, it's drafting plans. We went through a rigorous school and school improvement plan process with our sixth team. And we're really looking at our strengths, our areas for growth and just really identifying what are our root causes. Why are we here? What do we need to do to grow? So, and then, and developing, uh, smarty goals for next year. So we're already in that process to start working on this for next year. Uh, multilingual, I mean, we're pretty excited, we're very excited about the growth there. So typical to high growth, over fifty percent in both reading and math. That's huge. So again, recognizing that we do have some students that are still making that low growth. So again, lots of work to do there. Uh, and then overall, um, uh, for most of our students, seven percent of our students, uh, close to seventy, may typical to high growth in the STAR assessment and sixty-four percent in math. So again, knowing that we have a lot of work to do, uh, we're already tracking some plans for that. And again, it's making sure that we're working collaboratively with our, uh, T B I P teacher, with our, uh, special education teacher, research and teacher as well, and really bringing the team together. So again, data days, we're looking at the data, drafting professional plans there, personal professional development plans. And then really having strong routines to really be able to support our students. And again, it's, it's being intentional. How are we serving all of our kids? And it's having everybody at that table to, to support with that as well. Uh, a lot of conversations from those meetings, uh, we obviously invite some of our other specialists to come in and help out uh, whether it's through the M T S S, uh, uh, committee. So we start looking at different tiered interventions that we might need to, to support our students as well. And speaking of tier interventions, one of those pieces is the lunch bunch. So we're highlighting some of the kiddos that we serve. Lunch bunch is a, uh, our counselor, what she does is she'll pull kiddos that need more of that tier two intervention and support. So she meets with a group of kiddos, um, every week, every grade level. And then she really looks at, it's an evidence-based intervention. She, we work on social skills. We work on problem-solving skills, conflict resolution. We even have some career exploration things. And the group that's up there, those, those educators up there, that's actually a group of students that were there for career exploration. So we talk about different interests, careers, and just getting students to think about next, next part of their lives. And start thinking about what they want to do next in life. Um, and we do have some data up there. So a lot of our students, um, do have attendance issues, whether it's, you know, they, they have, uh, their, their true end. Uh, in this, this particular group, they add up to about sixty absences. And you can see at the beginning where they're out with the yellow and with the intervention in place with this lunch bunch, they have dropped to half of that. So and a big piece of that, we have what we call accountability circle. So we talk about why is it important to be in school? Who does it affect? So those conversations that really start just making our kiddos think. Uh, and the discipline as well is another one that we'll add up to about ten, uh, referrals. And based on this lunch bunch, I mean, we want to think it had a big impact, but no, uh, referrals there. uh referrals and based on this lunch bunch. I mean, we wanna think it had a big impact, but no uh referrals there. And then overall achievement, we use a, a, a measure that we call, what we call the S R S S I E. But our teachers, uh, what they do is that they, they screen our students for internalizing or externalizing behaviors. And based on that, our teachers kinda uh categorize our students either at high risk or low risk with some of those uh internalizing or externalizing behaviors. And then we have some meetings with our kiddos to talk about some of those pieces. And again, that has dropped to about half from the very beginning. So that's a, that's a huge improvement there as well. Speaking of data, so again, we always try to make, you know, a proactive approach when it comes to our data. So recess was one of the main areas where a lot of our referrals were happening. So a lot of physical aggression, um, injuries were going on out there. So in March, after looking at some of our data, uh, we implemented structured recess. So we zoned out the playground and we had um structured games, organized games. We had run for fun. Uh, maker space in the library where students got to build things. We had the playground available as another zone and the gym was also available. So every day kiddos got to rotate to each one of these zones. So throughout the full week, they would have died of tendency in every single part. And this was only during that lunch recess where we had the most uh referrals. And if you can see, at the beginning of the year, we had referrals come in quite a bit. So but in March, when we started this, we had zero referrals. April, we had two, we dropped down to one, and I don't think we've had any thus far this month. So that has been huge for us. So again, um, that's something that we definitely are proud of. Uh, we're looking on, on ways to, to make it better for next year. And again, we send out surveys to our students, we talk to our staff, and we take that feedback to make, to make the program better. So you can see some pictures of our kiddos there, either in uh running around and part of the run for fun piece, they would add up miles and then they'd get prizes for that. So very proud of that piece there as well. And speaking of positive behavior intervention and supports, again, we are huge when it comes to our tier ones. So what we do as a whole, right? These are the non-negotiables. Uh, and to support our students academically and behaviorally, we have things in place. So we, it's that portal one, right? Focusing on the positive. So we do have P B I S experience every other month. So our students get to have this huge event where we have first responders come in, we have families come in, and we'll do activities, engage in stations around the school like bingo, we do soccer games, art. Sometimes we'll bring in some STEAM activities for students to work on. Uh, we did have a day where we had some first responders come in and have a dodgeball uh matchup with some of our, with our students. Uh, and the kids have a blast. I mean, they, it's, it's a great way to build that community. Also, a big uh success piece there is our Jack Buck menu. So I have a Jack Buck menu that kiddos can use or Jack Bucks that they are using or following three personal standards. And I mean, you have kids paying a hundred and fifty Jack Bucks for pizza with Mr. Ramos. So it's, it's just amazing to, you know, not even my kids want to do that, but it's awesome to be able to have some of our students. It's just amazing. I mean, and we have some kids that pay, you know, we do donuts with Mr. Ramos, we do uh some other announcements is a big one. Kids wanna be on an intercom here themselves and then, you know, it's, it's just, it's awesome then to, to have and to hear them out there. And, and it brings them out of their comfort zone too. We have students that like to present their morning meetings every Monday and they just like to go out there. Of course, they're very shy, but it just, it helps, you know, you know, get them comfortable in front of people. Uh, the other one, Big Jack Buck uh reward meter, again, it's just, it's just like the Jack Bucks, but it's a full class, the whole class one. If students are demonstrating as a class that they have been reaching, uh, following one of the three personal standards, another teacher will acknowledge them. And then those add up and then they can get, they go up, they move up on the levels on the meter and it can also get rewards on that. So just another incentive for them there. Um, and then the student store every other month. So we have P B I S experience one month, the following month is the Jack Buck store. So it's been great to, to have a P V C team on board with that. They manage the store, they, they ask for donated items and, or they'll purchase items and then our students get to come in with their Jack Bucks and just try to spend them all. Uh, and again, it's just, it's been great to see our students so excited with, with other little accomplishments and, and we try to be very specific as to why they're earning those Jack Bucks when we hand them out. Uh, it's not just, you know, making it random. It's really just saying, hey, thank you so much for staying in the straight line and walking down the hallway. Great decision. So handle that as we do that. Um, but yeah, those are just some of the things, of many things that we do here in Mountview. Uh, any questions?
I have a thought. I have two students in Mountview and they come home with the Jack Bucks and they have these little pieces of paper like getting the laundry. All the Jack Bucks. Yep. All that. Should we try and find some kind of electronic tracking system for those? Like they need like and it throws points on it for them or something. Just like the buzz cards, throw it in their little pouches, their Jack Buck card or something. Cause I'm tired of washing Jack Bucks.
I think, I That's like, I'm not talking to Declan, but Declan, that's been Uh, yeah, I know the middle school uh has kind of a tracking system that they use on the concrete. I think it'd be something to definitely look into. Um, for a lot of our kids, a lot of our kids a lot of our kids have these bags, I mean, and they like to show them.
Oh, I
And they, yeah, so
Pride in that.
Yeah, um, but I mean, for the old, uh, older kids, I don't see why we might look into some of that. Yeah. And our teacher, I mean, it helps a lot of our students, especially our young ones, they have to count and they have to put them in it's a tent, that was a tent. So it really helps out.
Play with money.
Yeah. So definitely an idea. Thank you for sharing that thought.
I know that Mr. Ramos, um, the structured recess is a fascinating solution to what I know is often a problem. Do you know if any of the other elementary schools in our district are doing that?
I know that we've been talking about doing something similar. I know Mountain View Monument or sorry Monument and uh Pioneer, we're looking into something similar. Uh, I'm sure we can get Mr. Yafondo and uh Miss Greg on board as well.
It's pretty compelling data.
It's, yeah, I mean, there's a lot of things we can continue, like I said, uh, that we can improve on. But not only have referrals gone down to injuries, I mean, we used to get three, four head bump forms that we had to fill out because we had kids getting hurt out there. And now you have one adult out there supervising just that group of students and they're not no longer having to watch every other kiddo out there, which has made it a lot easier for them as well. Uh, but yeah, it's definitely something.
Teachers also appreciated that or having to do a structured thing during recess? Is that more of a pain in butt?
At first it was, we had a lot of students that just did not, they wanted to play with other grades, right? Other kiddos in other grades. Uh, we had a couple of kids that know I wanna be with my brother and sister. Yeah, but it's about building that community within that grade. It's helped a lot with students working together, not just in the classroom, but outside as well. I actually had a parent today tell me that they noticed that the kiddos are working so much better together out there than they were at the beginning. Uh, so I think it, it, they have a lot, they learned a lot of different skills and just working as a team and I think it just really, and again, the ten o'clock recess, they still have fifteen minutes of recess where they can go out and play and do whatever they'd like. So uh, it's just
How long is like each zone like for the kids? Is it like a daily play?
Yes. So every day kiddos have their fifteen-minute recess except for Mondays. They have their continuing recess and then they have a thirty-minute recess or lunch. So it's, it's an hour either lunch or recess, right? When we served our students, we talked to our students, they said that thirty minutes was a long time for them for recess because they started feeling silly after a while. So that was the reasoning behind, okay? So what do you think we should, well, maybe other games, we can do different things. So we use that feedback to, to break it down. So we, it was thirty minutes, we went out there, a structured recess. But then we thought, okay, thirty minutes in one zone was way too long. So then we added the run for fun component. So then kiddos were able to run or jog around for fifteen minutes. Then the remaining fifteen minutes was structured recess. And we gave time for our parents to set up their zones or just prepare for that next activity. So kiddos got to walk and be around that three to five group or that TK to two. Uh, they can walk, they can jog, they can run. We had some sprinters that were out there all that, I mean, it was, they were competitive. I mean, it was and the teachers appreciate it because the kids were pretty much, I mean, they were ready to learn after that. Long spread. It is a lot of
I do have a question, uh, related to the lunch bunch. That's a new program. I hadn't heard about it. You said it's evidence-based and I'm trying to understand your data. So you're saying, um, it, it's a program where you selected the specific behavior of like chronic absenteeism. So those sixty students started with the lunch bunch program. So they were selected by a staff counselor, whoever, um. Could you describe the data one more time? I don't understand like what you mean by achievement.
Yeah, so the the way we measure the achievement use is, so we had staff that would identify students as needing more support with, you know, a lot of kiddos expressed that they just felt anxious or stressed out. Um, or we had kiddos that just were aggressive in this classroom, right? So those students, that group of students that were pulled, we had about add up to about twenty at-risk or high-risk pieces. This, this, the survey has, I mean, it asks so many different questions and our teachers have to use their best judgment based on, um, and, and we take this survey twice throughout the year. We take it in the fall. We take it again in the spring. So it's just to see kinda where, uh, where students are. Uh, we start off and it's hard because a lot of our teachers don't really know our students at the very beginning. It's just what they perceive at that moment that our students are at, based on some of those spaces.
So it's teacher referral based on observations?
No, though it's, it's called the S R S S I E. So it's, it's a screener that we use where students, where teachers, uh, will measure our students based on some questions that are asked for each kiddo.
It's easier for identifying this that we use. Okay. So what brought them into the program wasn't the absenteeism at all?
No, it was just one of the pieces. So again, it's, if we see that, for example, we also have kiddos that may have gone suspended for certain things. Uh, we'll bring them, we'll have them be part of a, of a lunch bunch group and we'll talk about, you know, we want the rest of the group to really talk about how does this affect you? How did this affect me? And you have kiddos sharing that, well, it really made me scared when you started doing this and that. And it just, it helps us to realize, man, it, it wasn't just me that was affected by this. It was a full community of folks that were affected by this. But it's just really just having them share information and understanding and realizing and having empathy and sympathy for, for the situation. So uh, it's not solely based off that, that measure. My school counselor does, yes.
One time a week? Is it a set period of time or do the kids graduate? Out of the program, like how does that part work? Is it optional?
It's based on, so if you have another student that needs support and you feel like the students made great gains, they've done an amazing job. They're, they, you know, papers with physical aggression fees, for example, is the kiddo struggle with. We haven't had any, you know, issues at all, then that kid will basically, we, we'll, we'll have another kid use up that seat, if that makes sense. Uh, and we do it once a week because we have, you know, we try to go K five. So we try to hit at least every grade. And it's mainly the first through fifth grade kiddos that need that lunch bunch. And we'll, we'll, we'll mix it in some grades if we need to. We've done the kinder first. Uh, but Amy is very good, our counselor, very very good about asking questions and helping students just talk. A lot of times it's just getting to know each other and then we'll throw in some questions in there that she can just kind of, you know, help her self-regulate.
A curriculum that she follows that you can choose from based on the needs of the group probably?
Yes. Yeah, she does. And you're more than welcome to come. She's got a big binder with all kinds of data that she collects. I mean, it's pretty impressive. Yeah. Yeah, per kiddo. So it's, she's a, she comes, she's got a lot of private sector uh experience. So, I mean, she's been, she's been, uh, it's been amazing to see just how she tracks some of this progress. And you can see in our kids, I mean, it's not, it's not just, when we look at some of the data, um, these are just snapshots. I mean, the kids' gains when it comes to their behavior, social, emotional, I mean, that stuff is, it's pretty impressive. Yeah. Any other questions?
Thank you.
Yeah, thank you.
Thank you.
Uh, music booster upgrade?
I don't think the audience can hear you.
Oh, I honestly barely can hear you as well.
Okay, um, nobody ever tells me that. Music booster pack upgrade?
Well, I'm happy to be here. I'm representing a kind of a grassroots committee that got started uh less than two minutes ago. And I'm gonna introduce the committee that's uh present here tonight, Warren Libbertt. Right there, Ty Christensen, my wife Deb Adams, Tim Weber, and Bryce and Elise Goslin. And this all got started, um, probably over time. Deb and I, like a lot of you, attend the functions at the new Performing Arts Center. And my involvement in theater and music for probably over fifty years, it became apparent to us this year after the, uh, the musical production of the Addams Family, which by the way, was an excellent production. We came away from that saying to each other, you know, it was a great play, but we can't hear the ensembles on stage. And that just kept resonating with me. And that wasn't the first time that that has happened, but in that particular play with the large amount of cast, it, uh, it just kinda over, overwhelmed us. And so Deb and I needing another thing to take on, we, we decided that, uh, we gotta do something. And so we kinda did some background work with the principal, Deb talked to Nick a little bit and we kinda started feeling this out. Of course, I knew Ty Christensen. Ty is a sound designer, sound engineer. We knew his background because he has been working at the PAC and helping out with Allied Arts with Quincy High School Drama Department. So we knew his background and expertise. So we met with him and told him, okay, Ty, what does this facility need to bring it up to the standard that it really needs? Because this, these programs, the band, the choir, the theater programs have come light speed since they were in the old high school. I mean, it's amazing the quality of people that you have putting on these performances. And so we asked Ty, okay, put your pencil to it and come up with a number of what it's gonna take to bring that facility up to speed. And so he came up with a number just under fifty thousand dollars. And so Deb and I, having done this before with the, the, the new track that was built in nineteen ninety-eight, we knew that when you do something like this, if you're gonna earn money, you gotta do it quickly. So we made it a goal to earn fifty thousand dollars in basically two months. And I can report to you today that we're, we're over forty-two thousand. As of today, and we're not to two months yet. So the, the goal is basically not to jerk everything out of that facility, but to put new updated material that's not gonna have to be replaced in another seven years. But under the guidance of a person that knows the quality and knows how to put this stuff together so that we can give the people that are in that facility the ability to showcase these students that are performing for all of us. I mean, that's really what it's all about in creating a teaching environment. And so we wanted to come to you tonight to let you know that we are on a fast track for this. And this is going to happen. And we appreciate the support that we have received from, from Nick, from the teachers in the, in the, the, the different programs. And, you know, Kylie and Haley and, you know, Devin Chandler is new to the program, but if you've seen the growth that she has done, the awards up at Manson, large band. And so what's going to occur in the, in the Performing Arts Center is going to allow that facility, not only for the, the teachers and the students in there, but for the community. Because if you, if we all realize it, that just isn't a school facility. That is a community facility. And I've, I was the one that directed the first production in there with the, uh, um, the, what was it? Murray Poppins? And uh, in this spring, I'll be directing Call of Dolly. So all of us in the community benefit from that. And so I just want you to know that this is a, a real goal and a fast goal for us. So what we would like to do is to be able to have this in place for Haley's production in November. And so that, that will then enable all of us to go there to be able to hear the ensemble. Because if you have thirty kids on stage and you have, let's say, six of the principals mic'd and the parents and the uncles and the grandparents that come And the parents and the uncles and the grandparents that come to hear those ensemble groups. They they just can't hear them. And there's nothing that you can force that system to do to accomplish that. But with this this new system that will will occur. So if you have any particular questions, we'd be be loved to answer that. We brought the expert with us in in Ty. I mean, once he opens his mouth, you could, you can tell that he knows what he's talking about. And it's like, it's like another language. But um hey. All right, so we do have um a handout here that's got kind of a fact sheet. And then many of you maybe have seen this online. We've uh Warren has done a really good job with the Facebook advertising. We've been that we've been doing. And so we we appreciate your support. Thank you.
Okay, family engagement report.
Well, good evening. Is that on? Good evening. I'm Victoria Hodge, uh the Director of Support Services and Programs. And it's my pleasure and honor to be here tonight with a couple of key members integral part of our partnership team. That we're going to speak to building parent engagement through partnership. It kind of seems like a great segue to what. The Quincy is a special place, I would agree. And the partnership work that's going on here, I think, is also a highlight of that. And we do start with our Quincy School District core belief. That also demonstrates the heart and soul of what we really believe. Is that when students, families, community, industry, and schools partner together in supporting students, all students will succeed in learning. And I think we really have a lot of um points of pride and and ways to celebrate that. So this evening, we would like to highlight um a few things to introduce. One, our team, I do have Maria Vian here tonight. She is a migrant lead for us. And she'll talk about that a little bit later. Um I also just want to recognize that she has been um just recently recognized regionally. For some of this work. So we're just really proud and honored that um that she's she's. And Jessica Alcaraz is also an amazing member of our team that's joined us. And um she does, she's going to highlight a lot of the great work, especially around training and education for parents. And come alongside our secondary principals to really bring things um to those school communities that really haven't been in place in the past. So just so proud of our team here and we'll talk about that. So we're going to talk about our team, our roles. And um this is not alone work. This is really collaborative partners. And I think we've heard about that earlier in some of our presentations. Um we're going to share our connections from the state level. This is a priority. Um at our district level, it's a priority. And it's a priority at our district level where we talk about a theme and a focus. Um we also have a couple of celebrations and points of pride. We want to talk about the important part of how do we do this work? And we're going to talk about parent groups at the building level and as well as the district level. And then uh training and opportunities for parents and staff. And lastly, how do we reflect on how we're doing? What are we using to measure what we're doing? And how do we really look at that to honor parent voice to drive our next steps? So that's what we're going to do to highlight this evening. Um again, we pointed out Jessica, Maria and I are kind of a core team, a leadership team, if you will. But we don't do this in in isolation. We work with our communication team at the district level, uh digital ad. District parent groups, and we'll talk about that, district staff. We can't do this without teaching and learning, um special education, health services, and all the the important parts of our district that work together. Uh we have amazing community resources and tools. This does not happen in isolation without our partners in our community. Um our parent liaisons at the building level, our uh building admin and principals. Um and we're going to talk a little bit more about the importance of what we're building in capacity in a building parent team and group. Uh families and of course our students. Um and we have an amazing migrant team that we're going to talk a little bit more about that has a very good model that we're, we've learned from. And how that is helping us to grow that district wide. So at the state level, it is a priority. This is actually there. Families are our partners in education. O S P I has for many, many, many years had a very strong component in most of their programs. About the value and importance of family input and the close connections to that with student success. So home is important, of course, school, classroom, community, and families as partners. And so uh we don't do this alone work. We also know that that is exactly in line with. Next slide is our district policies and and our district work that we do and our strategic plan. And this is our why. Why is is our families, our culture accepted, safe, seen, heard, and celebrated? And we do that through promoting a welcoming environment for families, designing activities and events that honor and respect differences in the voice of parents. And a little bit later, we want to highlight some of those things that we're actually doing. How are we getting that accomplished? Our second theme that we think about and um are highlighting tonight are families that are valued partners in their students' learning. So we we accept and love the idea that we have events and trainings. But we also want to hear from families. We want to get the partners and how we're actually shaping and encouraging and and strengthening our student learning. Opportunities. So we're continuing to grow some ways to do that through our district PACs. Um and PACs meaning parent advisory councils or or committees. Um we do that at a district level, a building level, and then a department level with. Our migrants, parents. And then also expanding parent groups in in buildings that create that common vision district-wide. But we also provide training to families, identify tools and resources. And at the building level, they're also able to customize the things that they need to do. Because each building, although we are a district and very connected, connected. We also know that each building has its own identity and sometimes has some individual needs that they that they need to address. So with that, the the really fun part, we're going to talk about how do we, how do we do that? And so we are very proud. We have um an amazing migrant team. And um that and on the very front of our uh presentation, we actually had a group, we have a core group of uh parents. That is also, and students and staff, that are really leaders in this work. They have been together a number of years and built relationships. They have gone through trainings together. Um and Maria is going to share a little bit about how that model has really helped us to grow. And to expand that into our building work too. So I'll let Maria ahead and speak a little bit about our migrant.
So in our migrant pack, you guys can hear me, or do I need to use the mic? I do. So um in our migrant pack, I've been in the district for thirteen years. And I've been working with the migrant pack since then. I will say that our migrant pack has grown so much in those years. And I am very proud of that because we have parents that have. Been there for a long time, that have brought so much expertise to being part of the of the pack. Uh migrant has a really strong belief that uh parent engagement is what makes uh what supports students be successful. And so um in seeing that migrant pack was so successful, um we decided to implement it throughout the district. And we'll talk a little bit more about that. But what the migrant pack does is we plan. So we plan for the school year, and it's a small group of parents, about five. It could be more, but um we are working on, you know, growing our, the amount of parents. But we have included students. So that was a component that we were not doing. And a couple of years back, we decided to start doing that. Um if you remember Naieli Uribe, uh she was, she was part of the pack. And she actually made it to the SAC, which is the state, state advisory committee. And she brought a lot of important information and a lot of important ideas and support to our migrant pack. Um we review, um so what we do is we implement what what we plan and we review it. We will make sure that it goes into place. So we meet um, we meet monthly with the core team. And then from there, we plan for quarterly meetings. So we have meetings uh that are happening every quarter. And we have for the whole migrant team, I mean, the whole migrant parents. So we send invitations to all the parents that are migrant. They come and talk about different topics. Some of the topics we have talked about in this past year was like special education program. We've talked about the Department of Virus and like the family tax credit. And these topics are all topics that the parents bring up. And they're like, you know what, we should talk about this. Because it's something that it's um interesting the rest of the of the families. So it's not something that we come up with. It's something that they request. And then my role is to help make those dreams come true by, you know, contacting people. And making sure that they can come and present about um what they are interested in learning. Um we do have leadership trainings for the migrant packs specifically. They meet with uh O S B I personnel and they get trained. So they get leadership training. And uh in recently, actually, we had one in Wenatchee at the E S D. And it was really nice because the parents got to see other districts and what other districts are doing. And they're able to bring that information back to Quincy. And we are also able to connect with other districts. So based on what they're seeing, they're like, you know what, maybe we should do that. And I know uh one of the things they really want to um do, they would love to do is to have a celebration for migrant students who are graduating. So that's something that they're already looking into. And I know like uh the whole team would be a part of planning that. But the parents bring so much important uh information and value to the the group. And uh they do an outstanding job. Um if you guys have heard about the uh Neil Family Festival. Uh they are actually the ones who came up with that. They said, Maria, we need to do something to bring the community together. Not just the migrant families, but everybody. Everybody in in the Quincy School District and everybody in the area can attend. And we were, I was like, hmm, let's think on that, you know, that was six years ago. But this is the sixth um year that we've done it. And the attendance to that event, uh this year, we had about four hundred and ninety-two. Uh people attended. And it has been amazing. We started with two hundred. And so it has grown so much. And in the picture, you can see the core group with the migrant team, including their students. So um that's something that I'm really proud to be a part of. And um I'm very happy to have these parents. Um come together and meet and talk about what we can do to help support the students. Um and not just in the migrant program, but also in the district. So like I mentioned before, we noticed that the framework for the migrant pack was, for the migrant program was working. So we talked about doing building parent advisory committees. And so a couple of years back, we decided that we were going to start doing meetings in the building. So if you guys, I don't know if you guys are familiar with that, but each building in the school district has a migrant parent advisory committee. And so they meet uh this year, they were meeting monthly. And so what we were doing is we were meeting and we are talking about different things. Such as safety and belonging. Parents provide feedback about the parent family engagement plan, for example. Um we have families review data from surveys, but like the surveys that uh we recently had the students take and the families. They were able to review that data. And what they do with that information is they will come up with ideas and plans as to like what they can do. To um help improve and to help things get better, or they celebrate the things that are doing great, which are a lot. And um they also plan events. So uh I will have Jessica talk a little bit about secondary and what she's doing at the secondary. I focus in elementary. So I don't, and I work with Q I A. Um but Jessica will talk a little bit about the secondary is the same concept. Um but I know at the secondary, they do it a little bit different because, you know, elementary and secondary are different. So um I will have Jess talk a little bit about what she's doing. And then I'll, we'll talk to you guys a little bit about how the um. The building parent, parent advisory committees are meeting with the superintendent. We'll talk about that in the next one. So I'll hand it to Jen.
Hi, everyone. So um like I always mentioned, my name is Jessica Garan, Parent Engagement Coordinator. So I want to talk to you a little bit about the building packs. Um I've been with the district almost three years. And Maria and they've also talked to me about, you know, how involved parents are in elementaries. But in the secondary, not so much. And so um they talked about the vision and how I went with Maria on my first year. And I was seeing how parents were involved in elementaries. And I'm like, yeah, I really want that in secondary too. And so with the efforts of everybody, all the parents that I knew, um there's a couple of parents in the back too, that they have been super, not super, amazing. Um they come to the middle school, they have middle schoolers, and they also are very excited into the high school as well. Um elementaries are more established and they have those monthly meetings where principals meet with the parents. They have an agenda and certain topics that the parents bring up. But at secondary level, I can probably say that they have now dates for next year. It's going to be on our district calendar. So they have those dates where they want to meet with parents and talk about things that parents want to talk about. So I'm extremely thankful for that. Basically, at those meetings, um obviously, there's a volunteer committee uh aspect to it. So parents who just want to volunteer and bring food or uh something for teacher appreciation week. But there's also parents that want to look into data, look into surveys, panorama, they want to talk about. Why are my kids not feeling safe? Or why are they feeling safe? And what can we help them with? Um so that's, those are just a couple of things that we talk in the building packs at secondary, middle school, and high school. And this upcoming year, they'll be meeting quarterly. So we have those dates on there. It'll be on the district calendar. So if we have any parents with middle schoolers in high schools and you guys want to join me, then you'll have those dates there too. So I'm passing on to Maria.
So from that, um we started uh working with Dr. Bergman. And Dr. Bergman said, you know what, Jessica and Maria, I would love to have a family and superintendent advisory committee. And we were like, well, that's a great idea because we already have the parent advisory committees at the building. So it would be awesome to be able to have those families come and meet with you and share some of the information that they're learning at their buildings. And it has been a learning process. We have had um, this year, we had three meetings and they were awesome. I think parents were, you know, sharing their information. They were sharing their ideas. I think the best part about this meeting is the way the meetings are formatted. They are not super formal. Parents have an opportunity to share their voice. And I think that's what makes them more valuable. Is that they are able to share their voice and they feel comfortable doing that. And Dr. Bergman and all the principals have that and have done an outstanding job at making parents feel like they can share how they feel and what they feel. And I think that's very important. Um the purpose of the, we call it the F S A C. Is the superintendent holds quarterly meetings with families to gather their input for strategic plan and identify actionable next steps. So we talk about the strategic plan a lot. And I think a lot of our families are not very familiar with it. So after meeting with the superintendent, they have learned so much. And if, you know, I almost wish we would have had some parents come in and share a little bit about what they have learned, but maybe in the future, we can do that. Um so uh some of the topics that we talked about this year was academic updates, communication updates, school safety. We had the survey input. So parents were able to share their input about the survey with Colleen and with the superintendent. Before the survey even went out to parents. So that was a very valuable. Because parents were able to have firsthand, you know, access to that. And then they shared, you know, maybe we should do this a little bit different. So they felt like they were having input into that information as well. And then uh we had the pathways to graduation. I know that's something that uh parents were really interested about. And what's best about this, like at this last meeting, for example, we asked, what do you want to learn about next year? So it's not just Dr. Bergman and Colleen and us sitting down saying, hey, we're going to bring this information to you. It all comes from the parents. So it's parent-driven. Um the F S A C right now, it's only for parents. We do have a couple of students who go there. Um but we do plan in the future to have a student advisory committee as well. And that's something we're working on. And with that, I will pass it again to Jessica. And she's going to talk a little bit about some of the trainings that are being offered to parents.
So like Maria and Victoria mentioned, I do a little bit of the education and training for parents in our district. So the top uh little logo up there, Ready for Kinder. So that's one of the programs that I offer in both English and Spanish. For our parents, these are ninety-minute workshops and I change it throughout different schools. This year, it was at Pioneer. Um so they're ninety-minute workshops and it's for parents who have four to five-year-olds. Who haven't had any preschool or haven't gone to like Inspire, A B C Academy, other preschool that have no knowledge of that. And so these parents register for these workshops and they get to take a toolkit home. And so these parents register for these workshops and they get to take a toolkit home with all these manipulatives and it basically looks like games, it's like alphabet training and yeah, colored beads and different shades. So it allows parents to learn in this workshop how to use them and also take them home and use them with their kiddos. So the purpose of this program is to play with the purpose and the purpose of getting them ready for be in our, in our district and being prepared for school. So that's a really great program. Uh, we do have strengthening families program, so that one's a little different this year. We um, we collaborated with our coalition, Quincy Partnership for You. Maria and I are very active in that coalition and talk about, um, you know, what can we do for our students? What can we do for our families? And that is, that is one of the programs that Maria and I facilitated. It's a seven-week program and then it allows parents and students to also learn uh to be, to have better relationships with their parents and students, to know how to play games together, to understand the perspectives of how stressful it is to be a parent, but also how stressful it is to be a teenager. And that uh program specifically is for ten fourteen-year-olds and their parents. So parent guardian, whoever is in their immediate family in their household is more than welcome to come to these classes. And it's for seven weeks and then Maria and I facilitate them. Uh, offered both in English and Spanish and that program was real, I mean, I really enjoyed, enjoyed it. It's my first year doing it and I know the coalition also wants to continue doing that for our district. So I look forward to it. And then the last one is Love and Logic. Um, we uh Zoila Castillo is one of the facilitators for these classes. And that's for parents with kiddos of all ages. Um, she talks to parents, we have a work uh workbook that parents can come and talk about what they're struggling with with their kiddo, if it's discipline, if it's, they just don't listen, they don't take responsibility. Um, Zoila is there to talk, talk with them and you know, make scenarios to have them actually be not better parents, cuz they're all great, but also know how to do uh things differently, discipline differently. Um, I know one of the things that she really talks about is like physical discipline, so she tries to talk to them about different ways of discipline and how responsibilities and control of their decisions like uh it, it allows them to grow into a better person. So those are just a couple of programs and training and education that I have, that I provide for parents every week.
And I just, I would like to add, so for the strengthening families program, uh, we've been doing a strengthening families program for, I believe, how long Diana, two or three years? Maybe? So as a parent, I took it with my son when he was, well, he's sixteen now. And I can tell you that for my personal experience, it was an amazing program. Um, and it made a huge difference in the relationship that I had with my child. Um, so that's why I became a facilitator mainly, cuz I thought, you know, why not bring this to more families? And in those years, I think this year, we were able to impact about fifteen families. You might not think it's a lot, but I do think it makes a huge difference, especially because it's not just a parent, it's combined both parents and students. So and it's seven weeks and they committed and they attended and they graduated. So I, I, I'm very proud of, you know, being a part of something so special and so wonderful, so.
When is this the first year that our staff has been?
Yes, yeah, yeah.
That's really great too, that we're really excited about. It's something that we can stay in the future, cuz we really believe in this program. It is phenomenal for the families afterwards are so, I can just kind of walk through a couple of times this year and we're just so proud of them, they're so engaged. It's really, really cool.
So if you guys know of any families, we do plan to do this again this school year, uh next school year, sorry. And so we do plan to do it again and we would love to have more families participate next time. Um, I will say that as a parent, it helped me, it helps you build relationships. It's not about parenting. I think we all parent different, we all, you know, our parents teach us different. And so I think it's about building that relationship with your students. Um, so it makes a huge difference and I would love to have more families participate. Thank you.
What season is that? And you said seven weeks, but is that spring?
Oh, this year we started in February and we ended in March, I believe, end of March. And the reason why we did that is because we always think about our parents that go to like Mexico or our migrant families that go to different places and then they come back. So we were, we always keep in mind a time that is not super busy for all of our families. Um, we wanna make sure that we have families who are able to be there. Um, so what we did is, we did for, we did it back to back. We did English and Spanish, so we did English, I mean, Spanish on a Monday and then English on a Tuesday. But we might be doing that a little bit different next year depending on what the families share. Um, like I said, we do take uh into consideration the information that we gather from our families.
That's the perfect segue to how do we gather feedback and honor parent voice? And and is that, that is exactly right. Every meeting and every event that we have, we have surveys and we do ask what worked well. What maybe was a barrier or didn't work well and and that is an immediate feedback that happens that adjusts meetings each time. The, the, basically from topics to the way that the forum might be, you know, the way that we facilitate it to the meeting time. So we really do um think that that has been really very helpful to be very immediate. Immediate feedback is really valuable and it helps us to, to make sure we're listening to that immediate meeting. We also have another new survey that you're gonna learn a lot more about. Um, I think the next board meeting actually, so I won't steal the thunder. But um, but really it is gonna be another on awesome tool for not only at the district level. It helps us to identify trends. It will help us identify, they have building data as well that will help craft their information to build into their school improvement plans, their parent family engagement plans at a building level. It is annual, so it's more, these are trends and things, but we do have some great celebrations that, that we are gonna be sharing out about um engagement, family engagement. There's also some other pieces around student data. So we're excited to hear a little bit more from Colleen and team around that next time. But what we did gather, this just happened in spring twenty twenty-four with a new tool that we've had. And so it does provide an opportunity for reflection of the building sites. I know already when we met at the recent uh superintendent meeting and um Dr. Bergman spoke a little bit about getting feedback around how do we make sure that we get this back out to parents? How, how should we do that when we're listening? A lot of them had already heard about it because at the building level, they had already talked about. So it does, it's, it's um a good thing to know that we are getting better at systems to make sure that we're hearing that voice. It also, again, provides information that's utilized at the building level. So what did that tell us about some next steps? We do know that um as Maria shared, some of our core teams are smaller in number. Um, so we wanna look at how do we get additional pathways for parents to be involved? There is not one way of involvement or engagement. Um, if you're a working parent, it may not be that you can come during their school day. So what are other ways that you can also get information and be involved? So we're gonna continue to enhance our um additional ways for parents to to, to feel like they have voice and they're engaged and involved, increasing our communication of what we're doing. There is a lot happening. And parents often say, I, it is so much. We, you know, we're continuing, we have amazing communicate, you heard that report from Jessica, I think our communication is getting better and better. Um, that her and that team is, is amazing to do that, but we also wanna be sure we're doing it in multiple ways. We have families that don't have remind, we have families that do have remind. We have uh families that don't have digital asset access and some that need paper. We have phone calls that are made, looking at our audience, trying to make sure we're getting communication out in a way for everyone. And lastly, just enhancing the routines with building staff, this is somewhat new. Um, I think we've evolved and um through a continuum of they, they would say there was involvement and engagement. And now there's partnership and that, what that means is it's two-way. It's really, when you're a partner, you have, have a voice and it's interactive. And that's really what we're striving for. I, I think we hear more and more of amazing examples of ways we're growing there. But we wanna continue to enhance that and provide some training because that's a new way um for, for our staffs as well. So how can we better equip ourselves to have tools to be engaging with our families and, and our students? With that, that's kind of all we have tonight, but we're welcome to take any questions for, for our team.
I just think it's marvelous program. And relationships are everything in any community, any business corporation, it's all about relationships. Thank you.
Okay, thank you.
Well, thank you so much for your time.
Thank you.
Okay, best program?
So that is a written report from Q I A survey. We link that as a PDF, so you have access to it. Those will be on for the next two weeks. So if you have questions between now and the next meeting, let me know and we can talk about it at our next meeting. Uh, if that works for the board.
Superintendent?
Yeah. We have nailed down student board interviews. You wanna leave? I believe you're available on the seventeenth, correct? And you not see, did, uh, I want to confirm that with you?
Uh, I'm not entirely curious, cuz I don't know when I leave to Oregon.
Okay, okay. Um, so it's the sixteenth, we're gonna start at three o'clock. We have four, um, sorry, the seventeen, seventeen, we'll start at three o'clock. For student board interviews. Uh, we have four applicants, uh, which I'm really excited about. We can select one cuz it's the junior rep and we have two senior reps. So uh, if anybody is interested, uh, let me know. Shannon reached out.
Monday?
It's a Monday, yes.
At three o'clock?
At three o'clock. Can Shannon, you're available or interested?
I'll try to be there, but I'll let you know if I can.
Okay, that'd be great. You're running the show.
You have to be there.
Yeah, so look at your calendars, let me know. If you are interested in participating, the students run most of it, uh, which is really exciting and fun to be a part of, to watch them work. Um, and stay out of their way and they do a great job. So uh the board were there and I'm there just for guidance to kind of help them usher uh the conversations along sometimes, maybe help.
You, you're just there to scare them. You're just there to scare them.
I'm just there to be scary, yeah, yeah. Fall retreat date, Valma's gonna be sending out a doodle for September, so just check your emails for that, that's gonna be going out soon. We're gonna try to get down either weekday, day from five o'clock to probably eight thirty, um, and come up with fall retreat. And once we get a date, we'll work with getting uh someone to help him and help facilitate that. So excited for that opportunity. Uh, the vice principal position interviews are on the seventeenth, there's gonna be a community meeting break from six to seven, that's tentatively scheduled. If that changes.
Seventeenth as well.
It's on seventeen, it's at six to seven. Yep. Um, we have fourteen applicants, so they're screening uh students. Um, so to whittle that down to about forty-five applicants. So excited about the interest that that position is about. Um, facilities committee met last night, uh, they've arrived, uh, a recommendation that will be coming to the board. Just the timing, everything, it probably won't come to the board till the last meeting in August, just with July, we went one meeting, we're almost done now. And then August, we're trying to get the school year up and running. So uh, that, that recommendation will be coming uh to the board in a full report. We have a community member and a staff member that will be presenting to the board that, that community's recommendation for final board approval. Um, and that will be our long-range facilities plan, uh, North Star uh for next years or so. Um, again, yeah, you know, thank you Rita for attending graduation. It was a wonderful day. Um, we graduated two hundred and twenty-nine seniors walk. I think it's the most that we've ever had, twenty-six Q I A students, the most Q I A has ever had. It was just such a wonderful celebration. The student speeches were inspiring. Um, it was just a really great, great day. So attending and just thank you to all the Q H S, Q I A staff that just worked so hard with those kiddos across the finish line and, and families too that support them to get there. It's a big lift. Um, I've had the opportunity of attending the Monument Elementary Talent Show. And if you walk in, uh, there's gonna be a Mountain View Elementary Talent Show. Was that today? That was today. Um, Georgia's was last week. All the elementaries will do one. Pioneer has, they'll have theirs Friday. And when I went to Monument, over fifty-three kiddos performed. And in front of their entire school, in uh front of uh all the staff, staff for the flash, uh flash mob. It was just so fun. But what really impressed me the most is that fifty-three Monument students felt safe enough to be vulnerable and take a risk in front of all their peers.
Yeah.
So it really says a lot about our elementary school culture, that they feel safe, that they belong and that they can take that risk. And some of the kids, it was so cute. Uh, one of the most needed BMX bikes tricks. Uh, I get there and there's a ramp set up. But it was probably the highlight of this little girl's life and it was just so oddly, like she started out with, he wants to bike tricks and the crowd went wild. And of course, he doesn't wanna see bike tricks. So uh, and then another group of boys just stood up and showed their painting that they all three worked on together and described how they did it, how they mixed the colors. Uh, so it's just really cool way that, so I'm just really thankful that all the elementaries are doing that and it just warmed it than anything, it just warmed my heart, just that our elementary is all of our schools, but this really showcases our students taking those risks uh and in a really positive way. Very confident, yeah. And then just last day of school is June fourteenth, we'll have thirty-two hundred very children uh at twelve o'clock on the fourteenth. And some, and two hundred, actually five hundred staff members. Five employees, yeah. So it's, we're really excited for the last day and everybody's doing their best to be positive and make it through. We're doing very well. So that's all I have.
Hey, student board?
So we're at, um, we are ending. We're gonna have a movie night, this is, which is free for high school students, it's Wednesday, for the last year's school. Um, we also are ending the week with the spirit week, which is, sorry.
Oh, you're fine. It's just a very cavernous energy.
Um, yes, for our last spirit day, it's teachers and soft day. It's very hilarious, you know, all the students and teachers, uh, all today. Wednesday, we had I know Monday, so this Monday is Moody Monday, it's John Day. Today was um beach day, the top of the Tuesday, uh, Wednesday. I'm not exactly sure.
Green and gold.
Uh, green and gold. Thursday is there you go. Thursday is, do you bring us stuff? And I'm on, gonna bring your biggest one you have. And we've tried to make it sure that you can not bring your sibling.
My sister goes to the high school, so I guess it would have been, technically it would have been fine.
Um, all budgets were approved by Q H S, um, A S B and was submitted to the district. We also submitted junior clubs and their constitutions, which we like your pool for this evening. I'm gonna read you a little bit of those clubs. Um, to start off, we have Destination Education, which is a club for students looking to explore education after high school. Uh, they're able to join and plan and to trip to colleges, um, their campuses, universities and bring in guest speakers. It's kind of like avid, but for any student and bringing in more, um, depth information instead of having to join the class of avid. Uh, we also have X C A, which is a national club, which is fellowship of the athletes. Uh, in the club to promote good sportsmanship and welfare student athletes. Um, also our last club is Tabletop Games Club, which they only on Fridays and they've been play, this is all also uh tabletop board games like Dungeons and Dragons, Path Under Risk. Um, it's a very fun club. The most inclusion and collaboration. I haven't been able to join one unfortunately, um, but I have some lost students, but it's a way to distract and also instead of like all online games more in, kind of in person and being able to involve with each other. Um, and yeah, that's kind of what we have left also. We are already planning the event for the fall. I think we've learned a lot that kind of things we've seen before. Just not it though. Plan some events already ahead of time. And this summer, we are sending eight officers of the A S B class to the Wanda Leadership Camp um, at Central Washington. Well, they're very excited about the opportunity and will be coming back to high school. I've been at camp for two years now. This year, I can't make it unfortunately. I've been that camp for two years now. This year I can't make it unfortunately, but I brought a lot of things back to high school and I'm excited to make peers to bring back a lot more and everything's clear. So thank you.
Thank you.
Not much, just the last week. Everyone's working on like finals and I'm sure everyone's like stressing out about like the finals. But I already graduated, so I don't. And I think that's
I think that's the biggest smile I've seen in your face.
I just have finals for Big Ben.
When you're, when you're done.
I have to worry about Big Ben this week and then I graduate on Friday again.
So with all that you've accomplished, um, over the past four years of high school and two years serving as a board rep, um, we just wanted, I want to thank you on behalf of the whole board and um, Dr. Bergman as well for your amazing leadership. You've, you've brought a lot of changes to the student rep role. And, um, we really appreciate it because the board is giving this. It's not just a card, it has a gift inside, just the right kind of gift for an elder. And, um, I also wanted to just mention that, um, that Yonasi was in this, um, publication that's published by Wazda. Goes up to more than two thousand people, school board members and students across the state. That's her in that photo. She was onstage at the conference in November as, um, just really an exemplary student board representative. So we were all really proud to have her there in this review. To have a copy of and we just want to thank you so much for all your leadership and we're looking forward to seeing where you go from here.
Thank you. I appreciate it. I think being on the school board was like the best thing I ever did. Like I walked in and I was like, I don't know what I'm doing. And then at the end, like now, I'm like, it's one of the best things that has helped me grow. Especially with everyone's support and then Mr. Bergman's support and Mr. Gardner's.
We're very proud of you.
Thank you.
All of you guys.
And hopefully now my senior reps, well, now seniors. Do even better things, hopefully.
Thank you.
Board and leadership development. I did give each of you one of these. I have Stu Hunt contact me. And he heard we were really struggling with our standards of education. And he just thinks he's got the program fit for a king, but he has a lot of great ideas. So I thought I would present them to you, not be discussed tonight. This is for future reference. I do, Stu Hunt?
Who's that?
He's been at the school district, he was at the school district for over twenty-some years. He was a choir teacher for a long time.
About thirty-four years ago.
Yeah. Um, low educations. Uh, percentages. And he's very, very adamant about it. I have been given document after document after document. Some of these I just picked up and shared. The thing that's on top, I had a member of, uh, Wazda. Just open yours up and you'll see.
She's a school board director.
Correct.
Yeah, she's a school board director.
He was wanting to know if we might be interested in participating. It's got all to do with the student representatives. Um, she would like us just go ahead and read it. We can deal with this at the next board meeting.
Why did we not have this information ahead of this meeting for you this?
I spent three days trying to get this off of my phone. Kept having issues and then had issues with my, my printer. And so I am sorry that you got this so late.
O P M A requires us to all have this prior to this meeting.
Oh, I did not understand that. I'm sorry. Okay. No, I did not realize that. I figured that's why I did this and then I guess I could have emailed it. Cause she sent me an email.
The board requires through the Open Public Meetings Act to have any of these materials be prior to the meeting.
Okay.
So that's important. None of us should be surprised if needed, like we are tonight about this.
Okay. Well, I just didn't understand that, if you're anything she had said, but I just want you guys to take it home, decide what you want to do, who can bring it up at the next board meeting, I thought. That's the only reason I brought it. Okay. Oh, sorry. We are policy review and adoption?
No, no, we don't have any. Down to new business.
Okay, new business, Q S D proposals?
So those are the clubs that you already just walked us through and what's
Do we?
It's an action, it's a formal.
Okay, okay. All right. So do I have a motion to adopt these actions that they desire?
A motion to adopt.
I second.
Thank you. It's moved and seconded. Motion carries. All those in favor? Anybody opposed?
Congratulations.
Thank you.
Clubs. Yeah, we haven't had, I don't think any new clubs for a while, so it's great.
And I think that Diana has some great input with some of that. Right Diana? About some of these clubs.
No.
No.
They all sound fantastic.
Yeah, I agree. Okay, well, meetings adjourned. All right, thank you.